Everybody called me to order. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, appreciate you being here. Just had a good morning for Christmas parade we just got through with, so we're going to thank you for coming. Let's have a pledge of allegiance and then we'll talk to whoever's going to come give our implications.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God and gracious heavenly Father, we thankful to thee for the beauty of this day. Father, for the ordination of civil government, Father, we're thankful that you've made provisions for us in this way. Father, we're thankful for our leaders at all levels, from the highest even down to the lowest levels. Father, even thankful for those with whom we disagree, knowing that there are so many people around the world that live under oppressive regimes, don't have the freedoms that we do. Father, we pray for kings and those that are in authority in all places that we might live quiet and peaceful lives. Father, we give thee thanks this night for the great town in which we live, the communities that surround it. Father, we're grateful that we can be a part of it, Father, we believe it's one of the best places in the world to live. We're thankful for these that serve in this capacity in the city council, as they strive to make our lives even better. Father, we pray that decisions that are made, deliberations will exemplify thy wisdom and not the wisdom of man, and that all things that are said and done will be in harmony with thy will and in the best interest of all those that reside in this great town. Father, we pray your blessings on the mayor, the council, all those that are present, or police chief, or fire chief, or city attorney, for all those that have an interest in the things that are going on here, we give thee thanks. And Father, we ask your blessings upon all, it's our prayer in Jesus' name.
First thing on the item on agenda tonight is recommendation to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a recommendation to approve those minutes?
I'm like a recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye. Second is recommendation to extend eight hundred thousand dollar line of credit to First National Bank for six months, for the highway two seventy-eight east project. And this is loan number five oh two seven five zero zero one. Jan, you might be giving the... The reason we need to up, send a line of credit is to finish out the project.
Right, the loan matures December the twentieth. Now from heat, that project may be finished, I'm over in January.
We're close to being done.
He recommended to go with the six months.
And then we'll get reimbursed.
Right.
The month of state. We're borrowing the line of credit, then we get reimbursed from them. And it may not be six months, it might, maybe two or three months, because they're getting closer on finishing the project. So is there a recommendation to extend this line of credit?
I'm like a recommendation.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
I was saying, due to the board's decision by my dad.
Number three is a recommendation to reappoint Wade Nixon on industrial board. His term ends December the thirty-first. And he is the chairman of the industrial board, and just like to reappoint him so he can maintain that seat.
The mayor, I feel to put his date on there, I see it now, it's December the thirty-first nineteen oh seven.
Okay.
It's a six-year term.
Right, it's a six-year term. Is there...
Excuse me, mayor, these are not staggered?
No.
No?
I talked to Wade.
Now, next year, there are some coming up each year, there's some to come, but not...
These, the terms tonight are the six-year ones.
Right.
I called him to verify that today.
That's just the way it's on our...
Your members are staggered.
They are staggered, but these aren't tonight, because there's still other members on the board.
All four of these are waiting for the sale about tonight.
They're replacing Stanley Sherrill, Deborah Coffrey.
Chris Ridge.
Chris Ridge, and theirs ends the end of this month.
Right.
So that's why they're six.
Wade's in it too?
Yes.
I like the motion, lady.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Number four is a recommendation to appoint Jared Wells and David Hall to the industrial board. In one fourteen, one one fourteen, term ends twelve thirty-one ninety. These also will replace the three member seats, the term says expire. Is there a motion for these recommendations? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Okay, number five is a recommendation to approve resolution number twelve, two thousand thirteen twelve sixteen. It's a request of transfer of alcohol beverage license. Incorporated for lounge retail liquid class two, package license store located four sixteen Baxter Avenue. This is the... Big J's, is that correct?
It's the big G package store.
SPG, and they got changed owner's solid. Still going to be a bid, just a transfer of ownership.
Now, this is the bottom of the list. Make your aim, honey.
They have, they got through ABC, made an application fee of a hundred and fifty dollars to us and supplied us with their insurance information, buying it. All this lacking, if that's the resolution for the council, or ABC to issue it in their name.
What's the name of it going to be?
It's still going to be SPG package, but it's a new owner.
SPG package?
Isn't that what it is now, SPG? This, this is the corporation name.
They're supposed to.
This one.
Through Scott, they went through everything, they're still doing it.
Are these local, then? No.
Is there a recommendation to approve this resolution?
We should just try and devote shield, that must recommend that I should be trying it.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. The next two items on agenda, we just realized that we didn't have exactly what we needed running the paper. And one of them was ordinance to amend zoning map. And if it had been for Hollywood forty-three north, project across in Foxville. And Scott, what we need to do is run it one more time. It was supposed to run three times, is that correct?
That's correct, we need to check on. There is an issue about parcels, so we need to go and check it on there. Make sure we got the exact part, but then we need to drive.
We need to vote to table.
We need to vote to table this ordinance number two thousand twelve.
All right, this is the one door for time. The one you're talking about now, that we need to...
This is the one side. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
Okay, it's north.
I'll make a motion that we table it. Do we have to give a date for the next meeting, or just title it?
Any more motion? We need a second. Need a second to table this first order.
Okay, I'll take a second.
And how's that? Need to read it in a minute, Steve.
Use that just to table it?
Just to table, okay. All right, is there, we got a second, it's all in favor, say aye. All right, the next one, and I'm sorry, I just realized this, you're a long way from the hospital, I'm sorry about that. What we did, we just didn't get... When it was put in, it was, there was a mistake made, it wasn't, nothing that can't be fixed. We're going to have to table this one also. And when we do that, I'll let you explain if you want to. If you want to give any, I know you can't say too much about the project, but anything you can say, but it could be fine.
I'm kind of a little hardy, I missed what...
Okay, we're going to have to postpone this one also, because we've got a couple of things that was incorrect, but not, you know, nothing that can't be fixed.
So what, I'd like to what happened?
We just have to postpone getting approved tonight.
So when will, when was the next option?
Our next meeting will be first Monday in January.
April six?
Six, yes ma'am.
January six?
Yes ma'am, we should have Greg, I'm sorry about that.
Was this just on the running of the paper or is this also got some parcels or things incorrect in it?
Just more of a system notice.
Just the notice, it's probably terminal to number of times in the paper.
Right, it did run, but didn't run, it's supposed to run three times, I think.
And it only ran what, a couple times?
My thinking was twenty-five. Just a technical, didn't nothing.
So that was like... Is there anything I could've done?
Yeah.
No ma'am, you did everything correct. You worked the planning zoning board, you done everything you're supposed to do.
Okay, that's what I'm sure.
Yes ma'am, nothing.
On our end.
Your end is correct.
So January sixth is the next week.
Did we go for that?
Hold on. I think it ran, I think there's a good chance it ran three times if it was in there two times. But with Alice being one hundred percent sure tonight, we decided to postpone it.
Could you approve it or talk about it based on verification, and then if it's...
Pending verification, you mean?
Yeah, if, if there's a way that you, you know, you could say, well, we'll vote on it tonight, and then if you verify that it did, it did run three times, then you could...
Well, we'll vote on it better way, yeah, Scott. Better way.
And then if that way, if it didn't run, then I'll come back. Is there a way?
We'll have to wait, we'll make it for sure. So is there a motion to postpone this one also?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, if we got, if we got a postpone, I'll second.
Is that correct, Scott, for you?
I think so.
She drove all the way from home.
And when you and I talked to a phone this afternoon, I didn't realize, I just, we just felt it was going to go.
I just want to make sure it's nothing we did.
You didn't do anything.
If I make a bit.
We got a motion, a second, is there a vote on this, all in favor, say aye. Now, is there anything you can say? I know you can't give any details on this project, this is a market project.
I'll just, I'll just introduce myself.
Yes ma'am, tell us who you are in that way, because you done everything correct.
Okay, good, that's what I just like to make sure. My name is Gail Mantler, I'm representing the Broadway group. And we are looking at developing a property next to First National Bank on South Military Street, eleven forty-one. And we are asking for rezoning from, I believe it's R two, and under your new ordinance that was just passed on this ever second, I believe it's B one, general business, that we'll be asking for. And I would just, in the future, on January sixth, appreciate a favorable vote.
I think it'd be good, I think it'd be good for him.
Are you going to tear that house down?
I don't know what we're going to do. That's a good question. It's a cute house, everybody, everybody...
I'd like to listen.
Love that house.
I don't know if there's any way to move it.
My dear friend lived there and it's...
That's, if you've got people interested in wanting to move it, I mean, we, we work with people a lot.
If you had to say it's the so-and-so-so's house, who, who was, who used to live there?
Jean Treger.
Jean Treger? That's what, that's...
If I'm allowed to say that, you're allowed, please.
But everybody knows these houses, they, they, you know, they know that more than the street for that, somehow.
For older people.
Yeah.
His name is Dan Lloyd now.
They have now.
And her name.
Next door.
Oh, next door.
That's the one next door.
Okay.
No, Miss Trilling's house is exactly the...
Is the flower house.
First National, and then Miss Lloyd's is down in the...
Lloyd's down in the hall.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. Right.
Thank you.
That's all right, that's all right. Things happen. Just make sure it's not...
Let's get down to number eleven, I put one in. Number eleven is a recommendation to hire Brock Palmer, two-time LSA to do some work at the back of the police department, for thirty-seven hundred and seventy dollars. What we've got is, in the back of the police department where the base used to be, it's covered, each bay is covered in vinyl siding. Over, over time, the vinyl siding, behind the vinyl siding is pressurized. And over time, water has gotten in behind the vinyl siding, because there's nothing between it, there's no house route between the vinyl siding and wood. And it's rotten, and it's probably took fifteen years, ever since it's been closed in, to rot. And on the inside of those bays, there's Wade House Office, the kitchen, and Scotty Chamberlain's office. And across the bottom of the sheet, probably a couple of feet up, is water damage. It's got water damage in the carpet, it's been this way for quite a while. When you get a hard blow of rain, water will come in around it. And what we're going to have to do is replace the damage, replace the siding, and replace the damaged sheet rock, and paint it, and replace the carpet. So that's what this is for. And we need to do that. It's been brought by a test a few months ago, but this is something that's occurred for over a long period of time. We need to take care of it, and that's what this money is for. Jan, could we use that to fund, the capital proof fund?
Yes.
You can, okay. So would be the motion to hire Brock to do this work?
I'm like a motion, lady.
Okay, great. And I spoke to him today, and he said he'd be a few weeks, but... He's been like that for months and months, or a few weeks, not a word on him. Is there a second to hire Brock to do this?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay, ten minutes. Number ten is a recommendation to hire Dallas Trey Wells as a police officer, starting rate paid thirteen eighty-six per hour. Before we do this, I'd like to talk to Chief and Trey for just a few minutes, if we can go into second session. It'll take ten minutes.
Do two do what, do...
Talk to them.
Do interview them?
Mm-hmm, just for a few minutes.
Is that... Is that allowed under second session? Is it a good name of character?
This is, I think we're following one under legal.
Under legal.
So on your motion. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. This won't take you a few minutes. Motion, go back to your, very good search, can you?
Yes, sir.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Sorry about that, Blake. Number ten is a recommendation to hire Dallas Trey Wells as a police officer, starting rate paid thirteen eighty-six per hour. Effective date will be one four fourteen. And this will give Trey a couple of weeks' notice to work out his notice. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'm like a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Webb, I'm going to vote against this, not personally against you. I feel like the city needs to cut back, and this will be a good time to cut back, since we don't have to lay nobody off or anything. I commend you for going out and getting this certificate, APO certified on your own and paying for it. A lot of people, in a lot of places, I think, stopped that, had it achieved.
Yes, sir.
And he went out and got this, I believe it was with the Sheriff's County. I feel like we got enough officers right now, on force, plus we got some investigators, plus we got you as investigator, we needed to, Chief, or Patrolman. And like I said, nothing personally against you, but I'd like to see us, you know, take applications, try to hire locally, but there's nothing personally that I vote against you. I just feel like right now, I believe we've got enough on duty. And if we needed to, we could do like other towns, hire somebody part-time on their off days, and that would save us on insurance and retirement, and help save the taxpayers some money out here, like... One or two of our guys, I think, is doing that for the... Are they still doing that for the Sheriff's Department?
I've got one to work, some for the Sheriff's Department, I've got one to work for Solis Johnson.
Got one to work for Solis, and one to work, and a lot of communities, a lot of police departments is doing this to save money. And I just feel like we could do this, and save taxpayers, save the city some money, but I want to make sure, it's nothing personally against you, like I said, I commend you for doing what, what you did.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think, Tim, there's no... Before we get a motion to adjourn, we'd like to give you just an update on downtown revitalization, then I'll give Mr. Ed Mitter to give us an update on the Nutcracker. As you know, work is still in progress. I've asked the construction guys about our construction not to work this week, and not to work until after Christmas. So all the streets will be open, that way there's no construction going. There may be a little bit of concrete work going, which will be finished pretty quick. That way all the streets will be open, nothing will be closed, and they can get back after Christmas to work. I want to send you, tell you what, Kurt sent me today, said the last page of quest turn him about it concluded only nine working days in the last three or four weeks. Total project is right around fifty percent complete. The weather and the holiday shutdown have pushed back in the form from time ahead of schedule, possibly a little behind. The weather and the new year will determine if they're able, if we're able to get back on track or not. So they were a little bit ahead of schedule because of the weather the last several weeks, maybe get just a little bit behind, but hopefully they can catch back up. It said after Christmas, they'll work along First Street, north side of First Street, down to Coffee Buzz. They'll also be opening up Second Street, east and west, to install a new water line sometime soon. Center Tales been switching customers overnight, and I believe their in-ground work is fairly close to complete. Now, Alabam Power's going to move those power poles. They've got a target date of June forty-twenty. That's on Sunday. Alabam Power will come in on Sunday, try to move as many power poles and powers as they can, get the courthouse switched over, and then try to have everything back by Monday. That's the day. And the lights are, should be in around the first of January, all the lights, and they'll start putting them up as they come in. But it's coming along real well, as weather gets cold and wet, January, February, it could possibly delay us all into May instead around the end of April. But hopefully it won't, you know, it's no way of knowing right now, but they're not going to work this this week. So that's what I want later, but I know. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ed Romano to give us an update on the Nutcracker. How many people came, it was a huge success, Ed, and we all went and had a great time, it was really, really good.
You still might be in line, but that's okay about the success. But I would like to advise you on our two thousand thirteen Nutcracker results. First of all, I would like to show the impact upon our area, especially the school, the school groups. Now, basically what we did, we had it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Now, we had matinees at nine o'clock at our schools on Thursday and Friday, so that was four performances for schools only. And then we said, and then adults had gone, and we also had our performance each night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then two o'clock on Sunday. Where these are the hard numbers, we're still compiling some days, but these are hard numbers. School groups, we were able, we had a thousand six hundred and fifty-eight participate. This is from Brilliant, Goon, Appleburg, Avril, Hamilton, Living Streams Academy, Phillips High, and also Show's Christian were all here, and we were thrilled to death. The major problems that I enjoyed working with was the fact that we only had five hundred six, we had five hundred thirty students. So that was a good problem to work. So in our general public performances, we had another thousand six hundred that attended. And we did have one night, we did have a sellout, our average was about four hundred. If we took all the attendance, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, our average attendance was over four hundred. And we were just delighted to have those kind of results. And another amazing thing that, it was like a bolt of lightning striking, if we were putting these numbers together, is that one, we sold DVDs, okay? We checked out for name and address and pay for in advance, okay? So we could kind of track from those address elements where people were coming from. You know, so we had PayPal, that if you wanted to purchase pre-sold tickets, you go on PayPal with address and everything. From those addresses, we had attendees from distant states, twelve different states. And I'd like to read them, I know this is a longer piece.
Go ahead.
Arkansas, Florida, Georgia, Illinois, Mississippi, Missouri, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Texas, Virginia, and Wisconsin. I was just blown away. Now, I must say, in working with this, we had a total of three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight students and adults. Overwhelming success, we were certainly concerned about, did Nutcracker Ballet go over in Hamilton? But I must say this, in working with Bell, as our partners, providing location, Arts Council providing the funding, and Jessica Turner, her professionalism, and allowed us to all come together to make this work. And it was truly a pleasure to have three entities working together for the same cause and get these kind of numbers. We could never have done it by ourselves. We had fifty-nine performers. And they started, well, Jessica came to us in July, said I have this idea, what do you think? And it was scary. If I had decided, let's try it, and always, she began auditions and practices in September. They had been working all this time, weekends, and it was almost twice a day just before the performances, and you saw the results. It was truly outstanding. Out of those fifty-nine performers, they had a hundred and thirty-one roles to play. So they did be, one character, one scene, run back, change costumes, come back as another character. So we certainly are privileged to have someone like Jessica Turner. She's been before and before talking about this, very kind, very mild about this. We're very fortunate to have such a professional, so a person who's with us. For those of you who don't know, she's about to rent herself. She graduated from Auburn, and I told her I'm going to help that against her. But she, she's from Auburn, she was schooled at Juilliard School of Dance in New York. She performed up there for almost two years. So she's truly professional, and she's brought this to our city with me very greatly. As a result of this, we, we hope, we plan to continue this each year as an annual event. And this is an indication of the interest of ballet and Hamilton. The kids, promoting the kids, you know, in this artistic area, we're just delighted to support it and look forward next year and the year after, in many years to come. If you have any questions, I would be glad.
And the reactions from people around town that I've heard, I think everybody's been positive. I haven't heard any really negative talk about it.
Well, one lady, the only negative thing that I was, of course, I've worked all the way performances out front. And one lady... Well, little lady, uh, the only negative thing that I was, of course, I've worked all eight performances out front, and one lady, uh, came to me, uh, one gentleman said, at intermission, said they had to leave, they didn't like the seats, the seats were too hard, they wanted a refund. And of course, I was, it's actually a decision, you don't get a refund. That, that, that's the only problem we had, you know, we went through minimal situation for a first time out.
I think the first time is outstanding, I mean, out of it.
Well, we can never do...
As good as you'll say, anywhere.
It's very difficult to, when I talk about, I'm afraid I'm gonna leave someone out, but first, we thank you for your support.
Appreciate y'all.
Level came on as our partner, they've worked day and night with us, and of course, Jessica was so easy to work with, from the performance side, we work from the logistics side out of it. And then when the city's on board, all of our business came on board with us that we didn't expect, somehow, oh, yes, they were most gracious to us. Then we had private citizens, and you know, it, we were just over a plan with the support, you know, to make this happen, because we did not cut any corners, we did not compromise any area we didn't have absolutely do, because we had a professional stage built, we had the professional lighting, sound, and the disco displays, you, as you saw, and all that, that was quite expensive, but we, we would not compromise the performance. And again, it turned out very successful, and we, we're delighted to admit, uh, support our sponsor.
Well, yes, I love you, are certainly, uh, to be commended. I know it was a lot of long, hard hours, and those little children that stuck with it were so enthusiastic, and, uh, they were just so vibrant and full of life, and, and, and we all need this exposure around here, especially our children coming up. Uh, I, I'm just excited about it, and I just commend every one of you, uh, all your hard work.
Uh, we had eight performances, uh, again, and like I say, like on Thursday and Friday, had three performances, nine o'clock, twelve o'clock, back at seven o'clock, okay? And then we had the cast party afterwards that Mark and I attended. Those kids were still jumping up and down and performing, and I wanted to know, I wanted to drink, because I wanted to, I was wore out, and those kids were just so excited.
Well, and you saying that, when I came out, when Mark and I came out, um, those little girls were standing there with their books, with their little pens, and, and I had them signing, you know, autographs. They were just thrilled to be, and that was the day that they'd had three performances, and like you say, they were just so vibrant and full of energy, and so pleased and happy, and, and I'll tell you another thing. Uh, someone was telling me that all of the, um, McDonald's, Burger King, all down through there, and every eating establishment was just full and overflowing, so the economic boost to the city, and, uh, uh, it's, uh, we're just extremely proud to...
I just wish Jessica had been with us to not, and so that, you know, we just, I'm just so, it's quite an honor to work with professionals, such as, and it's very, and good results that she did, and turn the sides of things, and thank you a lot for...
Thank you. Citizens like you might be a better place.
All right, one other thing for you, uh, you get a motion to adjourn, is garbage pickup next week, uh, C H will be closing Tuesday. Normally, it's at Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, a lot are gonna take Monday, the, uh, employees are gonna take a vacation day, and it'll be off Monday. I think the county's doing it, I've heard a couple of cities are doing it. So the garbage pickup's gonna change, uh, next Monday, which will be the twenty-third, their garbage will be picked up this Friday on the twenty. Okay, Tuesday's garbage, which is Christmas Eve, will be picked up on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, and Wednesday's garbage will be picked up on Friday, the twenty-seventh. Now, this coming Friday's garbage will also be picked up, so they're doubling up on those days, this coming Friday will be this Friday, next month.
Is this a change in what we have been advertising in the paper?
Same, probably.
Probably, okay.
And I'm just making it for the, for the...
Right, right, I just...
And then that, this company, the next Thursday and Friday after Christmas, still pick up the regular Thursday and Friday, but they'll pick up Tuesdays, Wednesdays also. Tuesdays on Thursday, Wednesdays on Friday, is that correct?
And I add, I'll say, I'm on Monday. So my garbage was picked up today, so anyone that's garbageing is on Monday, they need to remember to go ahead and put it out again this Friday.
That's right.
Not that I...
If you see this, that, your garbage right on Monday, you'll put it back, I, I mean, this coming Friday. And we wanna wish, we won't be having a meeting between now and Christmas, or even New Year's, I don't think, but, uh, I'd like to take time to, just on behalf of myself, uh, my office, to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and the council can say the same thing. We do hope that everyone has a good save of Christmas, and a very happy New Year, and we'll hopefully have a very good two thousand and fourteen.
Well, the New Year's schedule is very hot, what is, or would it...
Well, the New Year's schedule would just be off on that Tuesday, uh, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, not...
Okay, it'll be off on the Monday, usually, too.
And we'll get that out ahead of time, the New Year's Day garbage.
Well, we hope everybody's, uh, Christmas is peaceful, and you're with the family, and have love and joy, and have the money to pay all the bills, all the Christmas presents, and, uh, everybody, it's, it's been a busy time, just get some rest and enjoy family, and we're so blessed and so thankful to be in this country.
And as the mayor pointed out, there won't be any construction, uh, this week and next week, so this week you still have plenty of time to get downtown and, and shop, and shop Hamilton first, and...
That's very next, tomorrow, I thought I'd seen some construction today.
There was a little bit, uh, just a guy doing a little bit of concrete work there on Wayne Ridge side, but he's, he's not on closing streets.
And have a Merry Christmas.
I've got a question, uh, after all that wonderful, I hate to bring this up, but, but we, so we were talking during the executive session, and, and I, I just have to clarify, I remember when Chief Connor, I know you would remember, because you was on that time, we were about committees, but Chief Connor was, was interviewed, and we had, that interview process was public. And I, I still would think that the interview process is supposed to be public, uh, so I, I'm still trying to, to give my arms around why an interview process would be in executive session under legal terms.
We had two legal issues that we need to discuss.
You had two legal issues of...
Of potential litigation issues.
So it wasn't about an interview process?
That's right, I would think that it was not much of an interview process going on.
Then why was he brought into the meeting?
Cause I need to talk to him. That's all I'm gonna say, I, I don't wanna get in that, eh? Okay? At least I'm getting that.
Well, you understand that, but...
I understand what I'm saying.
But it's legal.
But if it was, if it was legal matter more than an interview...
But you're trying to make, well, I'm not...
Well, I'm not trying to make anything, I'm just...
I know, I know.
I'm trying to clarify because of past history, we, we have to...
But...
But that makes more sense, the, you know...
If I wanted to get technical, I don't even have to let anybody out there, even ask a question, including the prayers, if they're not on this yet. So, I mean, I don't wanna get that way, you know, I just, everything was done right, it was done above board, and done very, very legally, and that's all I'm saying.
So I'll put a better note down.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
On favor, Scott? Where is her?